Those, which is basically on the Tompkins County GAS mapping site. So steps of how to do that, how to look at the GAS map will be put out, not just in the town supervisor newsletter, but I will post that document, I think, on our website and put it out, you know, any which way we can. So, thank you for the question and we've been hearing, you know, that you always have some questions. So we've tried to put a very thorough document together that we hope will answer all those questions.
I will look forward to it. Thank you. Mark, did this meeting just start being recorded just now?
Yeah.
So my words were not part of the record.
They'll be in the, that's why I asked for your thing. I'll, I'll put them in the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, the minutes of the October 18th meeting, I just sent out a revised version tonight. So I would like to move back till next week if that's okay with everyone, because I don't doubt everyone's had a chance to read them. Plus, I didn't, I wanted to go back and, and look at the, um, video, but the video had not been posted yet. So, uh, because, so we will postpone. Uh, Tamari, the town council report.
Um, I don't have anything to report from the town council, other than the fact that we want to express our continued gratitude to the zoning commission for the hours and hours and hours you've put into this mission. And we're also deeply appreciative for the weekly meetings that you've been having to, to tie things up. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Um, none of us know what to do with the Tuesday night except to come here. That's, that's what I think. I think it's actually something on television, but we don't have to remember. There is.
And I gave that up to come sat with you guys. You know.
Thank you. Okay, so it's probably, I'm probably welcome on YouTube. Um, okay, so let us go on to outstanding issues from Article five through 14. I want to thank Bill again for having, um, summed that up again nicely and sent me a revised version. Um, I had done a revised version too, and oddly enough, they, they actually coincided, which I felt thrilled about. So, um, so that starts with the overlay district, which is section of Article 5.3, decide about intermittent streams. Are they in? What data source parameters for overlay? So let us talk about intermittent streams and Bill, I know that you've got a map from our consultant, um, about that. But you're on mute.
Sorry, 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 apologies. Do you want me to share that map?
Yes, I would.
Okay, and because it's somewhere here, we're going to share the text, which won't be me, but let me just share the map. Let's see, here we go. And this is not. Okay, and I think, alright, so, um, that's probably quite hard for you guys to see there. I'm going to zoom in some, so you will no longer see all of Caroline. But here is at least a quadrant of Caroline. And I can back out again if people want. So, um, zoning commission members know this, but for the, you know, purpose of anybody else watching this via Zoom or there at the town hall, um, the water resources overlay is shown in the blue hashed regions here, and this has been out for a long time. But there is a question of, of protecting intermittent streams and whether they should be in or out of the overlay, and they were not mapped as part of the overlay. And so added now in pink and red, depending on whether it's in or out of the, or actually out or in of the Six Mile Creek watershed, um, are streams classified as intermittent, uh, by the Tompkins County GAS division? And there's various, you know, again, intermittent streams can be intermittent because they're drawn in dotted lines on old USGS physical maps. They are classified by intermittent by the Tompkins County GAS by their reckoning. And also the USGS updates electronic databases. So there's these different sources out there of what intermittent stream, if this is or isn't, but this is a common data source used by other municipalities in Tompkins County. And it is a data source that indeed the citizens could take a look at, because these would be shown, uh, on the county website. And so if they wanted to check this map against that, then it would line up perfectly. So that would be a rationale for using that website, uh, that data set. So that's what this is. Um, I did send an email out to all of you, um, reporting that, you know, obviously it adds land into the overlay. It adds, increases the area of the overlay by about 17%. From what it would be if we did not have the intermittent streams in. And the overlay with that addition covers approximately 15% of the land area of Caroline. So that's.
Can you narrow out of that export PDF, um, right, so we can see more of the map?
Uh, okay, interesting question. Um, I, I wish I knew, i- does that help at all? I don't know how to close that bar.
See where that little arrow is on the scoreboard right there?
Yeah, see, that doesn't help very much. See, so I can't, I don't know how to close the entire bar. Oh, maybe this. Ha ha, alright. Learn something new every day. Alright, thank you. And, alright, and, okay, so I'm, I'm done.
Okay, um.
Well, I'm going to note one thing, just for, uh, there, there's a difference between the red ones, which is supposed to be Six Mile Creek watershed and the pink ones, which are not. And I think there's some errors in that, just, just to throw that out there, like, you're showing stuff along, uh, Thomas Road, which I believe all entities in the Six Mile Creek, but those ones are showing in, uh, opposed to red.
Okay, so that, that would be a question for Rick, you know, I, yeah.
I'm just throwing it out there, but, but this is a working process.
Okay, um, Bill, would you just scroll the map down to the bottom of Caroline, so people can have a chance to see the whole thing?
And, and to Ernie's point, you know, the part, the reason there, I've made that distinction, asked Rick to make that distinction, was because the Six Mile Creek watershed is deemed as fairly important. And so when we did it with perennial streams, okay, that's probably at the bottom of the map. We, um, had a slightly wider, again, parameter for mapping, the actual protected area was no different. But we, the boundary of the overlay was 75 feet from the edge of a stream rather than 50 feet outside the watershed. And so I essentially did a similar, um, or actually sorry, 125 feet, not 100 feet for the perennial streams. And so what I suggested Rick map is why the pink lines look a little thinner than the red ones, if you can tell red and pink on here, is the outside the watershed, the mapping parameter was 50 feet from the edge of the intermittent stream. And inside the watershed, the mapping parameter was 75 feet from the edge of the intermittent stream. But again, the regulated area, the riparian buffer area is a 50 foot with, whether or not you're in or out of the watershed. It's, it's just a mapping thing to trigger a look when you're anywhere close.
Michelle wanted to face.
Oh, Michelle, I see your hand. Thank you.
Yeah, so, could you explain again why you use those figures, Bill? Why this, was it just to trigger it, or? That was confusing to me.
Okay, and, and, you know, so we can decide to do something different. Yeah, so, going back some time, originally when the overlay was created and mapped, the parameter was that 200 feet from the edge of a stream in the, um, uh, you know, basically in the Six Mile Creek watershed, it would be part of the water resource overlay. Now, it did not mean all 200 feet of that was regulated. But it meant that you would have to do abbreviated site plan review anywhere within 200 feet of a stream. And we all felt that that, given that we were only regulating about 100 feet, that that, you know, you want a little bit of buffer, because you don't really know where the edge of the stream is until you go out there and look at it and measure it. So it makes some sense for the mapping to be a little bit bigger than the regulated area, so that, you know, someone doesn't inadvertently stomp on something, right? So that was the idea of having it bigger than the actual regulated area. Now, 200 feet, an extra 100 feet seemed too much, so we shrunk that down. So it's only like a 25 foot extra width. That, I just copied it over for the intermittent streams. The idea being that, well, particularly in the Six Mile Creek watershed, let's make sure that some, you know, that a review gets triggered when we get even within 25 feet of the 50 feet that is close to this intermittent stream. That was the rationale, in essence, that it just, it leaves a little more cushion for making a mistake, either in terms of where the stream is, or where someone plots a building envelope on their property. It doesn't mean, again, that there's no difference in what would actually be allowed or not allowed and where. But it means you might be taking a look at that and going through abbreviated site plan review, um, in a certain 25 foot swath. That's, yeah, I, I, that probably was no more clear than what I said before. I apologize.
Michelle, is that, I thought it was clear. Do you think so?
Yeah, it, it's clear to me. I, I wonder if it would be clear to, you know, other people, but.
Well, I think we would have to have a clear thing on the map that says this is larger than the actual thing. It's to, uh, it's to alert you that you may need to look at this closely. And the only way you can actually determine some of these things is by ground proofing it by having the code officer, whoever, come out and look at it anyway. So, and we have all those things.
Sounds good.
Anyone else have a question or comments about this?
I have a question that I've written through. You know, so delineating the wetland, or even, you know, kind of determining where the edge of the stream might be, is, is, is something that is, is subject to a certain amount of vagueness. You know, so I'm just kind of wondering, um, you know, how, how does this really work out? I mean, I think that, you know, initially, what happened, somebody plots out their development and the code officer looks at it and says, ah, you know, the corner of the housing property is on this little hash blue area. And so, okay, was that, that simple fact mean that that's going to trigger ASBR? Is that going to trigger a, a site plan review, or is that trigger a code enforcement official going out and saying, nah, don't worry about it?
Uh, I, you know, I think this is a good time for Dan to chime in, but I think what I would think is, you know, what the zoning law says is, if the building envelope touches the water resource overlay, that triggers abbreviated site plan review. And I would assume as part of that abbreviated site plan review, that, um, one might want to find out where the actual stream is or wetland is, and then be able to prove, see where I put my building is not in the wetland. It is not within 50 feet of the stream. But, you know, Nan's the expert.
Well, the current, the current language says that whenever a building envelope cannot be sighted outside the water resources and flooded overlay, abbreviated site plan review and approval is needed. So it's, it's not, it's not just that you have an overlay on the parcel. It's whether the building envelope touches that overlay is what triggers it. So.
And that's what I meant to say, but if I didn't say that, I probably, that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah, so you could have, um, a, a fairly big portion of your property in the watershed overlay. But if the building site itself is out of the overlay, then there's nothing, you know, provided you meet all of the other, you know, setbacks and, and, uh, water and septic type rules can fit in there, there would be no other review. But if you are, but if it does touch that overlay, then, then the, the, the parameters and criteria of the overlay district fall into place along with the abbreviated site plan review.
And would that be the title of which one?
I'm going to have Ernie answer, or answer the question.
So, so what I'm hearing him saying is that if your property touches that little blue thing, it's going to trigger.
No.
No.
Not property, if your building, that you're planning, the building envelope you're about to plunk down touches.
Well, yeah, okay, building, building envelope, whatever you're planning to build.
Right, you just said property, though.
Okay, so just because it touches it does not mean it's within the setback, because it's this 25 feet buffer that the blue thing represents, right?
In some places.
Alright, so. So, so, so I guess, so then, so, so that's going to automatically trigger abbreviated site plan review if, if, if whatever you're building touches the blue area. Got it, okay.
And then within that area, then you would check for the riparian setback in the riparian area to follow whatever the, you know, whatever the rules are. So you would have to follow those criteria.
Or, and, or the blue area could be a flood zone, and then you check the town flood zone law. Or the blue area could be a wetland, and if it's a federal wetland, then there's a little 50 feet you could kind of build there, because our, our parameter is 50 feet from the edge of, uh, uh, non-DEC wetland. But you can still.
Again, I'm just kind of dealing with procedures here. So, so the point that that happens, then it's going to be incumbent upon the owner to map this accurately, so that the actual measurement can be made. And then a determination can be made whether or not you are in the setback.
Uh, Nan's an incumbent on the landowner, or that's what the review board would do, and I will. I believe already, Ernie, if you're building near a wetland, you're, you're supposed to do a delineation. I'm not sure everyone always does, but I believe it's supposed to.
In the wetland, do you do a delineation, at least?
How do you know if you're in the wetland and then not two feet away from it? If you get close, shouldn't you do a delineation?
Yeah, and DEC wetlands need, I mean, everything needs to be ground truth, even DEC wetlands get delineation. Um, and I don't think we have it in there written this way, but, but a lot of communities say, you know, this is the map that we have using the best data available. If you don't like this map, or you think it's wrong, by all means, submit other information, a survey or other information to show more accurate information. So if someone wants to just kind of take this map and the scale and call it accurate and not do any other delineation, if it's not required by another agency, I suppose you could accept this map. Otherwise, it's, it's the, the landowner could say, hey, I had a survey done and I, I know exactly that this building envelope is outside of the overlay, um, because they did a survey. So they can submit that information to, to, um, show that they aren't in the overlay or that they are indeed out of the setbacks, setback in buffer areas.
Right, but, but you're saying it's incumbent upon the landowner to dispute.
Yes.
Things on the map.
Yeah, otherwise they can, you know, they can accept this map, even though, you know, it's, it's, uh, um, it, it's as accurate as we can get, but you know, as, as floods occur and climate change happens, streams move, things change. So it's, it, it, the ground truthing is the only way to really accurately know where you are in relationship to the stream.
No, I'm just trying to make it clear as to, you know, who's doing the ground truthing. And what I understand from right here is that it will be the owner who has to demonstrate where their project is going to be on that land, so that it can go through the review process. Simple enough. The town is not taking that responsibility.
Right.
Okay.
Um, let me, um, yeah, I'm happy to talk about this, but then I want to go back to intermittent streams. So the last time I told this.
And by the understanding, we're basically just a 20-year-old map, and one of the new maps coming up.
So, um, again, there's various data sets in here. The flood zones, as you know, are 2022 data. The county works on revising their, their sets of data, but yes, currently we're using stream data for intermittent streams that comes from the county. And they said that's about 20 years old, and they said if we needed specific things updated, they could work on that. But they weren't going to update the whole county, just because we, we asked them to, because that's all, you know, that's takes time and work and, and money and all that kind of stuff. So, uh, if there are particular areas of concern, those can be updated, or as Ernie is pointing out, you know, uh, a, a landowner who has concern or could say, hey, this has really moved a lot, uh, either can present data, uh, as Nan pointed out, you know, to show that, because indeed things move, things change.
Let me go back to the question of intermittent streams. I think the question we have on the, before us is, are water resources overlay up to this point had not included intermittent streams?
Well, the problem is the map hadn't, but the regulations in the text had, and so we had a little discrepancy there.
Well, I don't think any of this, I'm truly understood that the intermittent streams were not included, at least I didn't.
I didn't.
Um, we, uh, are, I, I don't know why I didn't understand it, but I did. So now we see this map with intermittent streams on it. Last week, we, uh, we said, for instance, that we're concerned about intermittent streams, because they, they can cause pollution to the stream and to carry pollution down further if they're in areas of pollution. Um, but I want now to have a discussion about, should we include these on our water resources overlay map? And would it trigger site plan review? So that's the question I think for us.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, and for all the reasons we articulated last week, I support including, uh, intermittent streams, um, you know, in the mapping. We take them out of the text, we put them in the mapping, and I think that we kept them in the text, because we thought they were important. Uh, and I will, I still feel that way.
I agree.
Barbara, I'm seeing if we met. Bruce?
I think it's stretching too much.
I, um, I agree that I think we should include them. I just learned I have an intermittent stream, which I did not know I also have. I knew that my driveway, uh, often. It's an intermittent stream, but I think it's actually what, what Barbara described as a femoral last week. I think that of an intermittent, so, um, um, which is what carries, I have a delta on Dull Road, is what, you're most of my ground holders. Okay, so I'm generally hearing that we, uh, are deciding, I'm going to take that as a motion that we're including intermittent streams in the mapping, that Bill has moved that. Who would like to second that?
Uh, I'll second it.
Okay. Ernie, all in favor of that? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think that was unanimous.
So I, I do want to take up the question Bruce just brought up, which is, which is, so, okay. Um, we could use a different data set for intermittent streams. I mean, you're always going to be faced with the question of, is it up to date or not? And I don't, you know, so if we want to do a different data set, that could be done. We have to decide what it would be.
But we don't know one off the top of our head.
I heard Rick mentioned something pretty recent. I thought that he, that was, then I just read the email.
Yeah, I have a.
Michelle?
Uh, yeah, I thought, uh, Bill said that Rick said that the USGS maps were more recent, and that that's what he was basing it on, so.
Uh, it, it, sorry, so Rick said the USGS electronic database was more recent than the county um, GS data set, if Sharon's statement of it being 20 years old was correct. But he was using the county data, because that, you know, again, given what other municipalities in Tompkins County had done, I suggested he do, and that's what I'm saying, we could change that decision. That's just how this map came about. Like I say, it does have the advantage that if someone in town, um, can see that same data right on the Tompkins County JAS mapper, but has potentially the disadvantage that it's a bit older than the USGS stuff. So, you know, I throw it out there. What, I don't know what's better.
Uh, though I am inclined to think that newer is better, uh, I think the concept of transparency works. And the fact that if, if it does touch one of these and, and signals it, there are opportunities to find the other database and look. And, and for someone else to, to look. Barbara?
Um, what, I'd like to propose the, the opposite. I think, you know, what you're suggesting, and I'm, I'm suggesting using the USGS data. Uh, one, because they're more up to date, um, and so that will increase less, um, uh, discrepancies when ground truthing is done compared to, you know, what a map is showing. Uh, but also in terms of, and this is where Bill, I was looking at the, um, the overlay document that will soon be, uh, reaching the public, um, and will be at the data sources. And all of the other, I think, if I'm interpreting this correctly, all of the other stream-related databases are, uh, based on USGS.
Correct.
And so to be consistent, I'm just wondering if we should use the, uh, intermittent stream in USGS data.
That seems rational. Um, okay, so does someone want to second that? I'm going to second it. So there we are.
So, so I'd like to hear, though, if Bill or Nan have a specific, um, you know, different viewpoint to that, because you've certainly been into this much more deeply than many of us.
Uh, I guess I'll go and then, and then, if you, you know, basically, I'm agnostic on the question. Um, like I say, and I see it both ways. I agree with what you say, Barb, about, you know, it's consistent with the data sources that we're using in general, and, um, is, according to at least Rick, more up to date. And there's a transparency argument where, you know, that, that argues for the other, as well as consistency with other municipalities in the area. I really don't know what the right answer is, and, um, you know, so I'm okay either way. Um, and I did ask Rick, but he hasn't had a chance to respond. Did he have any words of wisdom on which data set might be better? And I don't have any information from him, so I am ignorant. So that's all I have to say.
Uh, Nan or anyone else?
Um, I, I didn't talk to Rick this afternoon about it, but I, I think that, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I'm more confident with newer data, and the USGS data is not, not transparent. I mean, that data, you can go to the USGS site and look at all of their maps. So it's not like they're hidden somewhere. We get their data as a GIS format, but anybody can go and look at the USGS's site and find unknown quantities of mapping and can home in on their parcels. So I don't necessarily feel it's a transparency issue. I would rather use more up-to-date data. But I also would like to recommend that we be sure and add, um, in the appropriate location in the overlay section, um, some sentence or sentences that, um, reflect that, um, you know, that the applicant or the landowner can, through a survey of that property, can bring more up-to-date information to be considered, uh, however we want to word that. So I guess my preference is for the USGS data with that, um, recognition that any data, uh, you know, we could have a big flood tomorrow and it changes, you know, the whole, the whole valley, who knows? Um, so, that's what I think.
Okay, um, Bruce?
As a, as a landmark, what do I bring to prove my case? Would I have to go get his engineer to say, this has not changed to this? I mean, how do you, how do you do that? Do I just print pictures and then they said, oh, that's cool, okay? Or do I have to actually go through some bitch for a deal to do that? It just sounds like what would happen to me.
Well, they're generally, um, they're generally done either through a survey, when a, you know, a surveyor is out doing whatever, doing their work, um, for a subdivision. Um, sometimes wetlands are delineated even when there's not a subdivision, and you have to hire the appropriate expertise for someone to go out and delineate the boundaries of the wetland. So it would be the same kind of thing. You wouldn't necessarily have to have a whole parcel survey, but you might have to have the, I, you know, a surveyor find the, the boundary and measure 50 feet from the stream bank, or whatever the, whatever the distances are. So it's not just taking a picture, it would have to, it would have to be some sort of detailed calculation and measurement that's, that's grounded in, in the reality of that parcel.
And, and done, and done by a licensed professional, if I understand you now, like a surveyor. Is that not just, oh, I go out there and here's where I think this is, and I use my handheld GPS. I mean, I think it needs to be someone who sort of is.
Right.
Or it could be somebody from the review board with a tape measure. Yes, no?
That's usually not what the review board's role is. Um, I, I, that would make me a little uncomfortable, but, you know, it's usually some sort of licensed professional that has the knowledge and equipment to measure those things.
Yeah, so we should be saying licensed professional, if that's what our intention is.
Yes.
Because there's no way to say this stream that moved from here to here, unless I have. Because there's no way to say this stream that moved from here to there unless I have a licensed professional to prove that.
But again, the licensed professional tells you exactly where it moved to. We can all tell it moved. But they can provide the data to show exactly where it moved to.
Show where your building is or your, you're gonna help your pieces and then you can, yeah.
Michelle?
No, I was just gonna say, I don't think there's anything wrong with requiring, having a licensed professional do it. I mean, if you're gonna build things and subdivide, sometimes there are these other expenses.
Well, is any of that, is any?
I, I've had work, I live near, I have a cottage near a lake and I've had work done and I've had to go through all that. It's just, you know, if you live near water. Yeah, that's what happens.
I apologize, I hit the wrong button and I muted the town hall. And if, thank you town hall for, sorry about that.
Oh, this is where I think we are in this discussion. Barbara moved and I seconded wanting to use the USGS data. We sort of went sideways on a couple of issues. I'm gonna bring us back to that point. Does anyone else want to say anything about using the USGS data? All in favor of that, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any objections? That passes. As far as this goes, and I think this goes back to what Nan was saying. This issue of being very clear. Yes, I think we need to have something on the map that says this clearly, and I think we need to have something in the. In the. Text. Of the law that says when using the map, how you do that through, and I'm gonna ask Nan to write something for us. That says that clearly that we come together. Can you do that, Nan?
Yep.
With that. I'm going to go on to section, yep.
What, what, one more item I would like us to discuss and maybe, is someone there with something, go ahead.
The item I want to discuss is the different amounts of setback, whether we can, with watershed you're in.
Yes, that was, and again, it's not a different setback, it's a different mapping parameter. The setback is the same. Fifty feet from the edge of the intermittent stream. All that's different is if you are sixty feet away out of the watershed, you don't go through ASP, as, you know, whatever, abbreviated site plan review. And if you're sixty feet away in the six mile creek watershed, then you do have to go through abbreviated site plan review. But the, the setback itself is no different.
Do we think that's reasonable? Are we happy with that?
I think it's just, just complicated and confusing and, and you know, one or the other, not both. Kind of feel like all watersheds, we could be protected, that they're not, there are some that are not more preferable than others. Anyway, that's just.
Are we moving that? That we go back to doing one?
But, but it's one, which one? I don't know, you know, I was so confused at this point. No, I. I think, I think I would move that we use the, the lighter pink. Throughout. Being the narrower. Mapping tool. Just because it was consistent throughout. And it represents.
Hearing that, do I have a second?
What would be narrow, narrow would be?
Bill, repeat that.
It, it, it's fifty feet, so that's the narrower one is fifty feet. So in that case, the. Edge of the water resources overlay would coincide with the edge of the riparian buffer area. That is, the entire overlay area next to the intermittent stream would also be a prohibited building area.
Okay, so Bruce is seconding that. Any more discussion on that?
Just in preparation, are you talking about? All streams for any on intermittent, or are we just talking in this case about intermittent?
I believe that Ernie has moved intermittent stream. Any other discussion? All in favor of changing that to we're only fifty feet away and we go to the lighter pink for the intermittent streams? Say aye. Passes. Yay, okay.
You sure about the color?
No.
Well, the color, the color is not an issue, but luckily the number is clear.
I personally believe that it's more of a. Low. Okay, moving on. I'm going to go to. Five point three B, section A, this is the twenty five percent clause. Move it, modify it, or remove it. See also build, build a little area of discussion holding. Could someone take down this map? And unless, and then put up the. I don't know.
I, I can put it up.
Thank you. Someday we're all gonna have meetings, we're all gonna be in one place again. Except I'm hoping to be dead by then and just not have to go to meetings.
Alright, so yeah, Nan is already there.
So we're talking about this one.
Yep.
Can you make that a little larger? Okay, so this is. Except when the water resources and flooding overlay district covers more than seventy five percent of any parcels. All lands within such overlay shall be deducted from the total parcel acreage to calculate net buildable acreage. Where more than seventy five percent of any parcel is covered by such overlays, twenty five percent of that land may be used to calculate net buildable acreage. Pursuant to article three. And land use activities allowing the abbreviated site plan approval by the review board. So let us, I think, as I understand that, that means if I had a parcel land. And seventy five percent of my entire parcel. Was in the overlay district, like it was a wetland and the whole string running through it, blah, 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 and I had. Less than twenty five percent buildable acreage. You would normally deduct that, but if it's more than that, it's twenty five percent of the land may be used to calculate now that the buildable acreage anyway. So if like eighty percent of my land was covered with water. I could still use twenty five percent of the land to calculate my, my net buildable acreage. So let's say I have. A twelve acre site and. Eighty percent of that was water, I could calculate one quarter of it. Meaning that I could do three acres and have a buildable site on those three acres.
Is that what this is referring to, the three acre thing, or is this?
Let's do something else?
Well, I'd like to back up to that one.
Okay.
And determine that one first before we look at this.
What do you want to back up to, Ernie?
Well, it's in the, it's in the, the language concerning the net buildable area. When we're looking at, you know, a parcel.
Right, that, that's.
By, by three, and then with how many lots you can divide it.
Well, no. So that's where it's, you know, in the ag rural district, you would divide by three, but the same thing applies if you're in a hamlet zone. You still, and you know, you, you still would do that. Of course, your minimum lot size is one acre, so it doesn't really matter, but you can divide by the number of minimum lot sizes, right? So I guess, I guess you're right. It really is only relevant in the ag rural district, so I take that back.
Yeah, relevant in the ag rural district, okay. So, so we were thinking that we were gonna say, alright, well, if your land is mostly. Wetlands, we're gonna allow you to do at least, you know. But I think we were starting to talk about just deleting that. And saying, okay, you know, if your lot is. So twenty acres, whether we have wetlands or not, you can develop. Seven lots as long as they meet all the requirements.
That's what we're talking about with this, is do we leave this in? Do we modify it? Do we remove it?
But no, this is a different thing.
Well, it, it's related and I, and that's why in my note I said, check that thing out, because Ernie's right, if we decide. To, in general, get rid of the buildable area framework, then this clause is basically not, is meaningless. But if we keep that in, then we can talk about this. More, so I, I understand, I think Ernie's point is well taken. We need to really decide, do we like that framework? At all. I did have a proposal, one thing I threw out where maybe this only applies to part, you know, well, let's get that later. So let's just talk about, I guess, the whole framework.
Can we go to that in the, in the document? That would be very handy because we, we have, for instance, Bill's map. You know, visible line thing, that would be handy.
I know, you know, it's really the definition of buildable area. My map, my sketch had to do with how you subdivide.
But I think it's in that area, isn't it?
I believe it does, you have this room.
Yeah.
Right there.
Yeah. Yeah, go up a little further, Nan, right there. Yes, I think that's it.
Okay, so then.
Yeah, it's basically, it's, it's, it's B and C. It's basically saying that. If, what we did originally is saying that. If you have a parcel that has steep slopes on it or water resources overlay. Then those are deducted from the calculating the capacity for that parcel. So this would be, yes, if you take out the whole concept of net acreage. This is the section where it would be coming out, and then we would make that change in the overlay section as well.
Okay, so let's all just take a moment and read this again.
Okay, and while I was bringing, there is a definition for buildable acreage, I think, in the definitions we can look at later. And it may be that we went away from buildable and used net, but we need to rationalize that, but yeah, let's read this first.
He's on, just see.
Okay, thanks, Deborah.
Thanks for coming. So.
And then the other part of this gets into the conservation subdivision thing because you can't count. Wetlands as part of your.
Well, no, no, that's not true because the conservation subdivision. Is density neutral. So whatever you calculate from this section is what you would get in a conservation subdivision. You can't build on a wetland, but the density, the conservation subdivision doesn't change the density at all. It just changes where the buildings are placed.
Right, but it would say that you, but, but when you're allocating fifty percent of the, of the. Total acreage to. Some sort of conservation easement or whatever, I thought that you could not include wetlands in that. That went through?
I don't think that's true.
I don't think that's true. We could look it up to be sure.
No, 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 I'm just, you know, if I'm in there, that's, that's. We find it later on and it was a good question, but anyway.
So, 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 so B here, again, only applies for a parcel that has lots of stuff on it. Steep slopes or water resources overlay. C applies to all parcels. Cause you always divide your net acreage by three for housing allowances. And to help close the loop, Nan, could you quickly scroll up to the definitions where I, again, I think it may call under buildable acreage or maybe net acreage?
So. This one here on A, net, a, net acreage is calculated by subtracting. Slopes greater than twenty five percent and lands in the water resources overlay.
Right, okay, great, because again, that's, so in other words, it does not matter whether there's a lot of these things on your property. If you have fifteen percent of your property is steep slopes. You have to take that fifteen percent out and then divide the remainder by three if you're an ag rural.
Right.
Or divide it by the minimum lot size if you're not, to figure out how many dwellings you could have.
Right.
And it's only when the percentage rises really high that essentially. Some is given back to give you a few more dwellings you otherwise could have.
Right, because we didn't want to take away, we didn't want to create any parcels that had no development rights on them.
Right. And in all cases, the actual dwellings have to be put on the things. That are not the water resources overlay, at least not the regulated portions, not, not, they could be in the flood zones, but they cannot be in a wetland. They cannot be in the riparian buffer or buffer offset area. But they can be in the water resources overlay if it is not one of those things, if it's a flood zone or that little extra distance we had in there. So, that's, as I understand it, what all this says. We've had some.
And go back, the original notion for doing this was in recognition that. Not all lands are created equal and that some parcels have more of a environmental capacity for development than others. And it was recognizing that, that steep slopes are, can be an issue. And they're from an environmental perspective and from being mentioned in your comprehensive plan. That they contribute to the environment and the rural character. So this was. This is a way of trying to match the actual capacity. Of a parcel with the environmental conditions. So otherwise, if you take this out, then. You know, a parcel that is all steep slopes gets the same density as a similar sized parcel that's flat as a pancake. And maybe that's what you want, but that's the, that's what we're trying to get at here by doing this.
And if Pete is still there, I want to point out that there is no prohibition on building on steep slopes in the zoning law. This was designed to.
Just calculating the density.
Okay, well, I've been trying to correct that misunderstanding of his for a while, but anyway. So, right, so it was just to make it less likely to build on a steep slope. So, I think Ernie is arguing that we let the health department. Be the arbiter, right? I think that's not a, maybe that's the right way to go, I'm.
And we, for instance, I think that, you know, when people lands is encumbered by some really very. Difficult building situations that, you know, there, there needs to be. You know, allowance here. You know, whether it's, I mean, because it's basically what it is written, it's gonna say, well, yeah. You know, yeah, eighty percent of your lot is, is steep slope and everything, so even if you got thirty acres, you can put up one house. You know, it just isn't gonna sit very well with somebody. And I think that in a lot of cases, when you look around and see. You know, for instance, on my, every little town, like Church Road, you know, basically there's a strip of land that is developable. Right next to what Church Road and the rest of it is. Yeah, steep slope, and you're never gonna go there. And so that strip of, you know, barely dense development along the road. Seems entirely appropriate and that's what's actually happening. And, you know. I don't know, I don't, I don't know that there, I don't remember, I believe Nan and Montfort have done calculations to actually tell us how many. Properties were actually in this category. And, and we, kind of interesting to revisit that, but. I don't know that the, the comprehensive plan really was telling us that we wanted to kind of carpet. A, a uniformity of, of density or development type over. Everything. You know, that, that. Somehow, you know, the wetlands. I don't know what I'm saying at this point.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think this is a technique that we use to. Just do a better job of matching the capacity of the land for the density. And recognition that not all parcels are created equal. You know, so I, I think that it's, if, if that's a concept that's important. Fine, if it's, you know, if you think that that's not something that's important, you know, this is a policy decision for you to make.
Yeah, I don't think capacity is the right word.
Well. I, I think to some extent, it's a question of not giving residents unrealistic expectations. If, if you buy a hundred acres and almost all of it is really steep slope or a huge wetland. But you think, aha, I'm gonna build thirty houses there. You know, you got another thing coming when, when you actually try to go do that. So. Keeping this in maybe protects someone from their own folly. And so it becomes partly a question of that. Yeah, other than the steep slopes, where, yeah, you look at California, you can build some pretty steep slopes if you want to, right? And I, I don't know if that's a good, you know, it tends not, not a great idea, but you know, when it comes. But, you know, when it comes to, hey, you know, three cores, this is a wetland, you gotta cram those houses in the last twenty-five percent. And you know what? You can't fit enough septics in to put those ten houses in. You only have the three. I'm okay letting the health department regulations guide that. I'm a little less comfortable with the steep slope part, but, you know, we aren't restricting building on steep slopes. So I can really go either way on this one. I do float what I put out.
Well, the government actually regulates the steep slope stuff too, through the survey.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah. But, but I do wanna float the, one idea I'd put out and it was, you know, that I agree that for relatively minor incursions of wetlands and steep slopes on a property, it's sort of feels unfair that you gotta take away thirty percent of my land, you know, uh, you know, options for that. But yeah, when they rise to this like fifty, sixty percent, it maybe is important to recognize you can't really get as many houses on there as the underlying density or minimum lot size allows. So I floated the option of, hey, when, you know, you, you don't calculate net area in general for parcels, unless they're covered at least forty percent, say, by something unbuiltable, like, you know, like a steep slope or the overlay. And then when you go above seventy-five percent, you start giving back to me, main twenty-five percent. That gets complicated, but might be most equitable. So I float the idea and I'm certainly willing to go, have it go over like a lead balloon.
I've never in favor of making things more complicated. I am in favor of making them more equitable. So. Anybody else have a feeling about this?
I do. I think that it would make sense to get rid of the slopes since that's partially regulated by the health department and leave in the wetland.
And leave what?
And move in the wetland areas.
Oh.
Resources overlay.
I think the health department will leave the whole thing.
I think they do too, but I, um, I believe, uh, I agree with Bill's arguments that we don't want. I, I don't, I don't feel the necessity of protecting people from themselves, but I do feel a necessity of protecting water and, um.
So the, the water is gonna be protected by all of these other setbacks that we've got. And so, I mean, what it, what it does is it creates a situation where, let's say you got twenty acre parcel. You can build seven houses, but, you know, seventy-five percent of them is, is, is covered with water. You have five acres left. Health department is saying one acre per lot. You're gonna put five houses on it instead of seven. Um, you know, so there's gonna be this little pocket due to this particular lot that's gonna have a greater density per house than, than adjacent property. But if the adjacent property is done in conservation, uh, lot or conservation subdivision anyway, it's pro- proposedly going to be a similar type of one where buildings would be clustered and there would be open space. Um, and so I.
So I'm hearing that as a motion to get rid of the highlighted.
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
The whole net acreage and calculating that to be.
I'm hearing you say potentially A and B, you're getting rid of A and B.
I think we're getting the, A, you know, the whole section.
No, you're not getting rid of C. You're not getting rid of calculating density.
Okay.
Well, you would take out the net acreage part of it.
Yeah, it just, it would just be acreage or parcel.
Yeah, you would, it would be taking that, taking this out.
Uh, Michelle, is your hand up?
Michelle?
Um, I guess Ernie just, if what Ernie summarized is true, which I'm assuming it is, I think he summarized it quite well for me. And I think then I would agree with that, that it's really, I just to re- I'm a little confused by the sole issue, to be honest. Um, it's, it's really a, an issue of where you locate the building. Right? Like, in other words, you're gonna have, you can put these houses on. I guess my question is, if you subdivide it and then you sell some, I mean, there's no, nothing preventing you from selling basically a piece that's all wetlands to somebody and they just don't know it. Is that right?
That is exactly true.
Well, there is in, in that, in that the plat will have notes on it now because of our zoning law. So if it's a riparian buffer, for example, it will have a note on it saying, there's a buffer here and somewhere in there, I hope it'll explain that means you can't build there. So I think that helps to, to warn the buyer.
Okay.
Am I correct, Nan?
Yes.
Okay. I, I think the way Ernie explains it makes sense to me, so.
Do I hear that is, are you seconding Ernie's motion?
I'll, I'll second it, yeah.
So Ernie is essentially moving to get rid of A and B and changing C to get rid of the net acreage. Um, and we don't, we basically are saying that you can build in the agro district, divide your, your acreage, your total acreage by three acres, to get that number. And if the health department is allowing you to build, put in a septic system metal.
So all the other laws would, would protect, you know, so.
Right.
Setbacks in the water system, you know, health department regs, any other, you know, zoning requirements we have, would all, so it just has to do with how many
Right.
Lots you can create on that question.
So that the health department would tell you how many, how many you actually know. And then, um, you would have to, would have to locate the, the dwellings so that they are not in the wet zone, the, the water resources zone. Okay, so that's that motion. Um, do I wanna, does anyone wanna speak against that motion?
No, yeah, I'm agnostic. I see vanishes both ways and I, you know, I'm fine with it.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that moves. Um, so that we're getting rid of, telling the, the section numbers, sorry, I don't.
Five point three A and B and then editing C to remove the net acreage. Oh, sorry, four point three, sorry, four point three.
Now we go to five point three.
And yeah, and then.
I went back to five point three about, well, after getting rid of this twenty-five percent clause because it does no longer apply.
I, I think then we should look at, but I think that means we could delete that whole clause.
Yeah.
And, and then you will probably need to do some search through the document to make sure that net area, buildable area don't show up somewhere else.
Yep.
Okay, so if that's in section five point three K. Okay, so we're getting rid of that because it follows from that. We don't have the voting.
Alright, so we're deleting that section.
Then we have G two, so that I'm assuming is five point three G two, the side of ten percent refers to the area or gift. And clarify the wording according, accordingly.
Yeah, I just couldn't figure out what's in this, man.
Yeah, so I think the intent, and I'm, you know, looking for input from down to means area. Uh, took it, went back and looked at the model ordinance. It was, they used the word entirety there, as I mentioned. So I think we could change this to say, shall modify or interrupt more than ten percent of the area of the, you know, entire riparian buffer or the area of the riparian buffer area. How do you like those words?
Well, okay, hypothetical situation, uh, you got, uh, a hundred acre parcel of stream running down through it. And, you know, you, so you, you've got, you know, how many acres of, of riparian buffer there? You're saying that if you wanted to violate several acres of riparian buffer, it would be okay because you happen to own a big chunk of property? Or would, I would, I think that in some ways it makes more sense to limit the depth that you can protrude to the riparian buffer. Yes, no?
Yeah. Uh, I, you know, I don't know, I, I don't have the science to know. I mean, I think that to some extent, if you're looking along a whole stream, if the vast majority of the stream's course has nice woody cover and shading and everything, then if you make a narrow path down to it, that probably doesn't have much impact. So if you need to destroy ten percent of the canopy by making a narrow path right through it down to the stream, it probably doesn't have a lot of impact. But I hear you that maybe, you know, if you can take a little bit off the outer edge of that, that that's better than making a path down to the stream. Eh, I don't know the answer.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, and again, I think this was, again, ma- many communities just outright prohibit any kind of disturbance in these kind of overlay areas. This was recognizing that that might be not what, that's not where you kind of have been heading with all of your regulations. So this was kind of a balance between protection and letting people do other things along the stream.
Yeah.
So you can, yeah, so that's, that's what that was there for. I, I believe that came from the counties.
It, it did.
Okay, Bruce.
I can see what, what, what Ernie's saying is, you know, on my own, my own position, if I've got seventy-five acres with a stream full length, and if I disturb ten percent along the border of the stream, not just, you know, across, I'd disturb quite there.
Well, yeah, I, I guess I just don't understand how, you know, a review board is going to kind of process this information. I mean, that, uh, it, it, it needs to be clear that it means area, I guess. If it means area, let's say ten percent of the area. Um, it's, I, I, I just, when I first read it, I, I don't know.
You wanna say acreage, is that the word?
Well, I don't, I don't know. I, I think it needs to, to have a sense of whether.
Doesn't it, doesn't it say area?
Does it all?
Um, for Parker and then Michelle.
Um, I, I, I'm just an operator, but it, it does say area, so I'm kind of able to cover it. But I would, after area, well, if it's ten percent of the entire riparian buffer area, I would, I would add on that parcel. Um, because right now, it doesn't, it's the entire riparian buffer area, which is like a whole town, right?
Right.
So clarify that it's the ten percent of the entire riparian buffer area on that parcel.
So Nan, is that your typing there?
Yes.
I, I think those both look fine. Barb, do you have a any issue with the language?
No.
Anybody else?
Well, are we in agreement that, that we should have some sort of relief clause in here? Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Well, can I say some?
Yeah.
I think the way it's written now is kind of weird, area within the entire riparian buffer area. I mean, is that what you meant, Barb?
Well, I suggested the, the last, um, three, uh, red letters, red words. But, um, I mean, it, it, it could be say ten percent of the acreage, ten percent of the.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we didn't, I didn't understand why we need that extra word area, with it's riparian buffer area. What else could it mean?
Well, we're, we're trying to distinguish between depth, um, like could, could, i- if it's fifty feet deep, could you make it, if you can disturb it, so it's only forty-five feet deep, sort of thing, you know? Or, or if you could just, as Bruce was saying, cut a little bit right along the stream bank, you know? So the question is, is it depth, which was Ernie's question, or is it area? Is it the linear length of, the width of the buffer?
We're agreeing with area.
Yeah.
I think it's area, and I think using acreage is a good, is a good solution.
Okay, and, and so I just, I just need to kind of wrap my better analysis. Why are we allowed, I mean, where, under what circumstances is it allowed? It's under any certain.
It would, so if someone, someone like say they wanna put their house outside of the overlay, but they have this view of the stream and they wanted to cut down some trees so that they could be in their house or in their backyard and see the creek. So that could be a circumstances where they would be allowed to take out trees or whatever vegetation might be there to create a view corridor, provided that it's not more than ten percent of the acreage of the riparian buffer area on that parcel.
Right, so this implies that any parcel anywhere in town, you can make an incursion into the buffer of this amount. This acreage based on this calculation and the review board pass, it has to pass or, or at least.
It had to be one of those things.
So it's allowable, this is an allowable incursion under all.
Yes, right.
Yes.
Yeah, because before it was kind of this allowable incursion. If you were in this special, you know, seventy-five percent of your water, of your land was underwater. Um, thing, but, but now it's.
No, it was, it was never part of that.
It wasn't.
It was.
I, I misunderstood. I thought this was kind of a stuff, a flaw to that other, uh.
No, cause, cause this is, this is a whole different letter, Ernie. This is G, that was K.
Okay, we are, we're whipping along. We're happy with this and we're whipping along. We're going on to H one, confirm the decision made at the ten eighteen meeting.
Oh, wait a second. So did you decide that that wording is okay?
Yes, we did.
Oh, okay, gotcha, okay.
We're just clearing that up, so we added a few words.
On that lot, yes.
Okay, so H one.
Yep. Okay, now we're going to H one, confirm the decision made at the ten eighteen meeting that the buffer setback area gets extended if there is an intervening wetland for a steep slope. The alternative would be to use a fixed foot, fifth foot width. So let us read H one.
I just have to try to figure it out. And why that would have its own buffer that superseded this riparian buffer. But I guess it's because wetlands don't have the same buffers that the riparian zones have, right?
Right, I think that's true. Okay, I, I, does anyone have a problem with the way that's now worded? We made that decision last week, we're just confirming it.
Okay.
Okay. So everyone seems fine. Going on to six point three A, which is, uh, I noticed that there were some words missing and I don't know what they are. So, six point three A. Uh, I think it's in this version. So, cause what I couldn't find was Caroline's comprehensive plan, it's in about the sixth or seventh line down, establishes the town as a place with a unique rural and agricultural identity. And a version I, I had, it didn't, some of those words are missing.
Okay, so that, that'd be something, probably an issue with the Google Doc version then.
Right, so this is fine. So let's just, we don't have to talk about that because it's just fine. We just found something that I didn't think. Okay, good. Six point five one, six B, there are two asterisks and nothing else, at least in my version. Six point five one, six B. Six point five one, six B. And you have more than, you have to go down a little and you don't have two asterisks, so that's fine. It says.
Uh, yeah, my, my, I think, my recollection is we probably threw asterisk in there to, to draw attention that Nan was gonna be deleting or moving. I, I don't know.
Okay, so that's fine. So it's good, that's good. Six point five one three, Nan reinserted a section of B, on B and Bs and short term rentals. Have we deleted it or was it dropped by mistake? So let's find that. Six point five one three.
Um.
Six point five thirteen, actually, is what it is, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for, oh, here, the, this one.
Yes, I guess it's fourteen.
Yeah, so it's, now it's fourteen. So it was in the original and then, I don't know, this was a confusion between versions in Google Doc. And I didn't have any notes that said that you had decided to take it out versus maybe you missed talking about it. So I just didn't know what you wanted to do with this one.
Right, and, and us either. So let us think, let us read this and see if we want this. It seems fine to me.
Well, I think if we keep it, we need to take off, or take out the language about the part here and set that.
Right, because we don't have, we don't have those things. Okay.
So the, this, it's not entirely accurate that we're just referencing the New York State Building Uniform Fire Adventure Building Code. And there's also a proper maintenance code which applies very much to rentals and things.
Okay, so shall we insert that?
Just say VR state code.
Okay. So Nan's gonna make that change there, New York State, thank you, Ernie, because we would not know.
Well. Yeah, the property maintenance code.
So you wanted, this part you want taken out?
Yeah, the setback thing, yeah.
Did you, can't forget, I have to go back to the chart. Do you have side yards?
No, yeah, no.
Yeah.
So then it would have to be this.
Yes. Yes.
Well, off street parking.
Shelby and the driver.
Man, basically, you don't want parking on the road.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, do we not want it on the road or we don't want it in front of the house? I mean, you could just say, you could end. You could take out setback where such setbacks are required and it's not allowed in the front yard, but I think we typically do, often driveways are in the front of the house, parking's in front of the house.
Yeah.
So Shelby on the property, is that what we're trying to say?
Well, it talks about off-street parking.
Off-street parking, it's fine, isn't it, yes.
I, yeah, I think what we want to say is off-street parking shall be provided for both residents and transients.
And that's fine, get rid of.
Say that again, Barb?
Off-street parking shall be provided for both residents and transients, period.
Yeah, just end that transients, yeah.
Do as shall be.
Yep. Cool. You get to have a sign, the sign doesn't exceed six square feet. And the site plan that the review board considers these things. That looks good to me.
So let me just, one thing though, I don't want to make you dizzy by me going back, but I just want to make sure. In our table.
You have bed and breakfast?
Yes, and see what you did, because that might have been why it was. So here you have bed and breakfast in short-term rentals as permitted, not with site plan review. So this.
That's how we hook it up.
This, well, no, it it conflicts with um. Where was it now, six point?
I mean, we could still have.
So this says the sign, um, during site plan review, the review board shall consider, but if you allow for a permitted use. There is no review.
Right, but but the first part is still okay, right?
Yes, the first part is still, yes, the first part is still okay, but. Um, if there's no, if if you stick with your use table and there's no site plan review, then that, these go away.
Okay, I I moved those go away.
Okay, so that's Bill and Ernie, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I just a quick question, what document are we working on here?
Uh, Nan's word version.
This is.
This is the word version.
They're playful, I mean, I I tried to find this, they're dead, could not.
Yeah, that was because it was taken out of the Google Doc somewhere along the line.
So it needs to be put back in, I guess, is what Ernie's requesting.
Well, we're just, you know.
I will put it back in with Google.
Let's have a link to it somewhere, so that we can look at that separately from the Google Doc, if we want to go back to article one, for heaven's sakes.
Okay.
Well, maybe we are getting close after this meeting, indeed, where Nan could distribute her word version again.
Yes, yes.
It'll then be very close to final form, right?
Yeah.
Well, final form for the information in public hearing, not final form for the presentation of the town.
Right.
Oh, burst my bubble.
And I, I think that there was also, didn't, last meeting, you. Uh, when we went through the site plan review, we added three uses to the use table that you have to go back and visit.
Yes, that that is on the list, did you?
Oh, is it? Oh, okay.
Yeah, did you make this in your Word doc?
Uh, I didn't see that, um, the the document that Jean sent out, which was. Out, you know, for outstanding issues.
Yeah, if you if you look at her items for articles one through four, the very first one is to review.
Oh, I got you, sorry, sorry.
No, no worries, but my question really is, had they been added to the use table in your version?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, let us go on to conservation subdivisions. I I think we have decided to include conservation subdivisions, but I, we want to just absolutely make sure that everyone is fine.
I I think Bruce wanted to have some discussion of it.
Okay, yes, maybe, if you want to say Bruce.
Well, it's the thing, the three papers that Nan gave us to read. There was quite a few things in there, one of them being that the average lot, the contribution subsidy. Was seventy-five hundred dollars more, which doesn't really help the way to get people to be, everybody to be a reporter. And the other thing was, it was right, the rest of it is a lot of flattery, words in there about open space and missing that. And then it's not an HLA, it's not open space. It might be a vacant piece of land, but if it's not owned by the subdivision itself. It's not usable space by them.
The land is always owned by someone. It's never, you never create a piece of land that's not owned by some entity, it's either. A lot in and of itself that's owned by someone, or it's spread out across all of the parcels, so everybody has a piece of. To preserve open space, or. You know, if you have, uh, if it's a big development and you have a homeowner's association, sometimes homeowner associations own that land. So it's never a no man's land, it's always owned by someone. And is required to be maintained by whoever that entity is.
Yeah, well, that's pretty much given, I mean, land owned by somebody. I'm just saying, if the contribution subsidy. And it's not owned by the people in the subdivision, then that leaves a lot. Different things can be done with that land, that could be left open, but if the man wants to let it grow up to eat.
Well, the perfect, the purpose is to keep it open, I mean, there's situations where you could have a farmer. Who decides that they, maybe they decide they need to sell some land to. Uh, keep themselves going, and they want to subdivide off. Certain amount of the land, and they keep the fifty percent for themselves that they farm. So there's nothing to prevent the original landowner from. From maintaining ownership of that fifty percent of the preserved land, and then they have a preserved. Piece of land that's able to be used to continue their farm operation.
Well, deserves to do whatever they see fit.
Right.
What I, that's what I'm saying. To me, the only way to control a contribution subsidy, and the other thing is, I think you're looking at. You are talking about not having mixed managements, when you go to a contribution subsidy. But not speaking where they're not going to be all six hundred dollar homes. End of the story, there's not going to be a double wide, there's not going to be a this, not going to be a that, they're going to be all. Sensible.
I I think, I think that I agree with Bruce, the kind of the take home that I had from reading the documents that Nan provided was that. Conservation subdivision necessarily aligns with the goal of creating affordable housing.
No, they're, it's not an affordable housing technique.
And and we understand that, um, and I think this is, this is kind of a, uh, uh, the question. Um, that, you know, okay, this certainly applies to every parcel in the town. Uh, and therefore, one can say that, okay, well, there's other places where affordable housing can happen. Um, and and will happen, um, but, um, you know, I think that that. It did give me some pause reading those articles, um, and. And just kind of realizing that it's, it's a step toward the gentrification of Caroline. Um, you know, the, I mean, you know, the areas where these things happen do not seem to be. Areas that are kind of welcome to the white power community here, so. Um, you know, I I, this is a question of whether this is really the right thing for Caroline. This, this worked just a little bit, this is, I don't want to drag this out forever, but I do think we, we. All need to kind of recognize that, um, this, this is not the be all and end all for every. Bullet I am on, chapter needs to plan.
Yeah, also says through the A group. Along, correct?
Correct.
It's required in the.
Bruce, well, sure.
Bruce, uh, Bruce.
He'll show you. All right, um, yeah, so so I I hear what you guys are saying, I think that you may be. I mean, I don't agree with everything you, the conclusions you've drawn from the papers, the paper. Said that the average, you know, the the cost of a lot, and I don't remember Carson's long times of rhythm, but it was like ten or fifteen percent more, ten percent more, something like that. You know, which indicates they were desirable, which is a good thing in that sense. But if they were seventy-five hundred dollars more, it's probably because it was in a very wealthy area, like, you know, a suburban area somewhere else. I mean, lots in Caroline that are ten percent more, that are two or three acres, are not going to be seventy-five hundred dollars more. They're going to be ten percent more of, well, probably going rate is a thousand dollars an acre now, I I don't know. So it's not going to be the, you know, that number you drew out, needs to be held in perspective, it probably reflects the land value of where that was. Which is not the same as the land value in Caroline, so don't go scaring people over saying, oh, if we do this, every, every parcel is going to get that, but you know. No, it will go, probably go up in value, but not by saying five hundred dollars. I don't know where you pull out six hundred thousand dollar homes, I, you know, there are many of those in in Caroline now. I agree that it is possible that because these are more desirable. And even that ten percent premium might discourage some lower income buyers, that it's going to tend to be moderate or more well-to-do buyers. But that doesn't mean it's going to be six hundred thousand dollar homes. Um, I I agree, it's not going to be a single wide trailer perhaps, unless we decide to mandate that. But a bottom line is, there aren't going to be a whole lot of these in the town anyway. So if there's a way to create something that is desirable. And doesn't have a huge price premium, I don't see the issue. And I do not see anything else. That begins to line up with the call of the comprehensive plan for preserving open space. I agree, it does, it is not geared towards affordable housing. But that's not the point, the point is it is the best solution in the agri-rol zone for helping preserve open space, which is a strong call. In the comprehensive plan, so, um, I hear the concerns, and I, and I would have to admit. It's where they've been put into place elsewhere have tended to maybe be wealthier areas, so of course the homes are larger and wealthier. If done here, they might not be single-wide trailers or cabins. But they also don't have to be six hundred thousand dollar houses, there's nothing in there that that really encourages that, so that's my take on it. Um, and I would vote to keep it in, I think it's an excellent addition, uh, and an excellent, uh, uh, application. Or implementation of the comprehensive plan.
Anyone else?
Michelle? Uh, I I guess I agree with what Bill said, and I would vote to keep it in, so.
You want to take a motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion that we keep in the conservation subdivision as, as written in our draft.
I'll second.
Okay, so that's Michelle, and I'll hear Barb first. And to keep in this section, which is five point five one two, or maybe six point five one two, depending on.
I don't know, well, this list says it's five point one five.
So, I know, so, um. Any more discussion of this? All in favor of keeping the conservation subdivision as written in, say aye.
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 All right.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. Okay, so that's conservation subdivision.
Uh, Jean, but before we move on to the other sections, do we want to deal with the paper? On water resources overlay, uh, or not?
The, you mean the word?
The white paper. The white paper I wrote, the the question is, is, you know, if anyone, there's a fa- a final version out now, or penultimate version, and the question is, if anyone has big objections to any part of it. Um, then I'd like to deal with that, um, and and am I clear to make? The final revisions based on decisions on intermittent streams we made tonight, and, and since you. Put that out, or or if you guys don't like it at all, then we should, I should stop working on it.
Um, I very much like what you did, does anyone have any comments?
We love it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we really appreciate it.
I totally appreciate it, yes.
Yeah, can we get a chance to just eyeball it before you.
Um, do you want to say it again, because you're a little quiet in my headphones.
Can we see it before we post it on the website?
Yeah, 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 absolutely, so I will make any fi- the final edits and, uh, ba- again, I think it's just a little like, like. Five point three K will come out of the paper now, for example.
Great.
Um, and the, and the other main question, you know, again, if you looked at the last two sections, um, I took stuff out that, that. Um, you know, might have been considered controversial or speculative. And if people aren't happy that I took that out, then I, you know, that was a decision, but if everyone indeed likes this. Somewhat closer to ground document, then that's how it should read.
I like that.
I I like it without the speculation, uh, speculation.
Well, of course you would, that was your suggestion.
That's why I'm speaking.
Well, I think we need to discuss about, about reparations for people who want a weapon. I do happen to have a big chunk of wetlands, I mean, perfectly happy to sell, anybody who expected something like that, but, uh. Uh, no, I don't think it's a responsibility to do that.
Okay.
It's rational for why we're doing this. And we believe that, if we bought a swamp, you'd also know, um, you know. There's, there's going to be no surprises here.
I have to say that I have, this is probably fifty years ago now, I most, we have friends who want to play that on, like, Roy Church. And they call it dismal seepage. That is the name of their home. Anyway, moving along, um, so thank you, Bill, Bill will update this, we will look at it. Once we agree, we will give it to Mark, because Mark's going to put it in the. In the town newsletter, or at least refer to it and tend to send people to the website.
It can go.
I don't know how long it's going to be, so it's, it's pretty long.
It's, oh, it's ten pages?
Yes.
Yeah, well, maybe we'll refer to it.
So I think we will, I think you should refer to it and you could have some explanation of what this is.
I agree with that, thank you.
Michelle?
Uh, uh, where are we with the little video, is that, is that all set?
Oh, okay, so so now, again, all that was pending these things, so now that, um, we've finished the language of five point three, we decide that we would post that. You know, so now we can do that, so if Nan could finish up five point three. Final language, then we're going to post just that, and once that's posted, then in the video I can refer to the fact that it's posted. And then, so I will produce that video tomorrow or the next day, as soon as this actually gets posted. So that's where we're at, and and having decided things on intermittent streams also, because that that was referred to, I think, in the, in the video, so it's all set to go. Um, and and I'll, I will put it out tomorrow, the next day, and then send that to you guys.
I have a question still.
Yeah, I do too.
Will Rick update the map to?
Yeah, that was my question, yeah, if you want the map, I gotta, you know, I gotta get Rick. And I don't know if he's going to be able to get to it tomorrow, but as soon as he can, I will make sure that map gets updated.
Um, yeah, and that's only, that's not, yeah, that is important because if there's a copy of the map in the paper. So that would be important, um, and, uh, the map doesn't have to get posted on the website quite yet, but.
Okay. Well, I will talk to him in the morning and. Get to it as soon as he can, he's pretty quick about these things.
Yeah, do you want, are you going to communicate all the decisions to him, or do you want me to write anything up?
Uh, well, the decision was fifty feet in the USGS database.
Yep.
I I'll tell him.
Okay.
I mean, feel free to back that up if you like.
No, no, I I don't want to bug him anymore, it needs to be bugged, so that's why it's going to be you or me, sounds fine.
Okay, we are now going on to the items that we wanted to review in articles one through four. Which are the new lines added to the use table, and. Uh, those are. I actually printed that out. And someone's going to put that up for us. Here's this.
They were high line looking for them.
Okay.
Forget what they were, oh, here, mixed-use buildings was the first one.
Right, oh, that's not that same. So that's mixed-use buildings, and we're going to decide whether they, what they should be.
Yeah, so this is, the agri-rol district is the first, um, column, and then the hamlets, and then focus commercial was at the end.
Right.
What's the definition of a mixed-use building again?
Um.
I guess I, is it something like the, like the Brooklyn Market that has, um, housing above and?
Yes, it's that one building that's got two different types of, two or more different types of uses in it.
Right, but so, but if you have, I mean, a, a, a residential, uh, commercial is very different from a commercial industrial. Um, so I, so so that's what we have to recognize, um.
Yes.
Well, we could cha- if you want to change it so that it's commercial, I mean, most mix. Well, we could change, if you want to change it so that it's commercial, I mean, most mixed use buildings are commercial and residential. I, I think that was what we were ultimately getting at. So maybe this, maybe this definition isn't the right definition. If what you really mean is a mix of residential and commercial.
That's what I, yeah, I agree.
Good point. I agree because that makes sense. Okay, and with that as a definition, we go to the use table. The question is, do you know, is it permitted? Is it SPR or is it?
Yeah.
Right? Okay.
Um, now my computer is like slow here. Let me go back to the table.
There you are. Okay. So the first one is, is ag rural. So there you are. So what do people think for this?
So, so I, I guess, I mean, I'm just reflecting that many of the commercial uses in the table are. Either SPR or SVP. And given that this is mixed use and we're trying to, you know, make sure that, that both those uses are appropriate in that area. I would suggest that in all districts, it, it be SVP.
Anyone want to second that?
Sure, I'll second that.
Okay.
But so.
And I assume that, now by definition, I assume that the commercial use would have to already be allowed in that district, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Okay. I'm hearing nothing else. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. The next one is?
Let, let Nan fill it in. Yeah.
Oh, yes. Um, what is that? I can't read.
It's staging storage or parking areas as a non-residential, non-agricultural use for vehicles, equipment, or materials, whether temporary or permanent. This came from the original section of site plan review before there was a use table. So you decided that this was, was not recognized in the use table yet. So that's why it got moved here. You know, whether, but you didn't really discuss whether you wanted them or not, but that's where you, you would want to, you know, make a decision. So that's where it came from, the site plan section.
Okay, so if I had a collection of old fire engine tankers and I wanted to keep them somewhere.
Or ironed gravel.
Or giant pile of gravel or some such thing. I guess, I, I guess I think that would be permitted as agricultural when you'd have to have ASPR and some other places.
I mean, I would say for sure in commercial, I've been using on the ag rural. I don't know about the other hamlet districts.
So what are you saying, Bill? Permitted to?
Well, no, no, she'd get review. I'm, I'm trying to decide if we're going to like not allow it in some districts.
I agree. I, I'm not, I'm not sure it should be allowed in any of the hamlets.
Yeah, I agree with that for sure.
Okay, so then I'm hearing permitted in ag rural. Site plan review.
Yeah, at least with review.
Site plan or in commercial, special use permit? Special use permit in commercial?
Well, what would be the rationale for a special use permit? You know, what, what, what about this, where, where is the use itself? Would we want to potentially control? I don't know well enough. Maybe Nan has.
You know, these are. You know, like someone would have a, a storage yard for, you know, they have. A heavy, you know, they're a construction company and they decide to build a parking area for all their bulldozers and backhoes.
Right, that's separate from their business, right?
Right, right.
Right, just a parcel, just a parcel that's got all of their equipment stored on it.
So I can see that needing site plan review. Absolutely. My question is, is there a time when we would actually want to have a special use permits? So that, because there might be something about the way in which the use occurs. Like you can do that, but you can't bring your equipment in at midnight or, you know, I mean, that's the question. I mean, what, what, what about the use would we want to regulate?
Do this for the next six months, but not forever. I think it's important to make it clear that this is, this is for things that are not associated with a permitted use, right?
Like a whole business.
Like a whole business or, or have a new car lot that is during the, you know, in the permitted district. Because otherwise people are going to say, what?
Okay, so Nan is typing in whether temporary or permanent, not associated with a home occupation.
Or.
Or permitted use or otherwise permitted use.
Or otherwise permitted use. Okay, so then what I'm hearing is in commercial. SPR. Not allowed in hamlets. And what about in ag law?
Same as we are. Or especially, yes, there's special use for it.
SVP. Excellent. Everyone happy with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And here's the last one.
Last one is waste disposal and waste storage processing or bulk transfer areas.
My tendency would be to only have it be in focused commercial, but that's just me.
Waste disposal and waste storage processing for bulk transfer areas.
So, wait, so that's like the, uh, the, a town dump, for example, right?
Well.
Or transfers.
Transfers, you know, commercial transfer station. A chemical recycling facility. Um, yeah.
Kind of a swakes collection. Yeah. I mean, like down in New Haven is a place you can bring like old cathode rage tubes and have them moved down. It's commercial.
But, but no, in the focus commercial.
In the focus commercial, yeah.
I mean, is this, so let me just ask a more basic question. Is this a use that you envision wanting in the town?
Yeah, there's, there's the answer. Get rid of it. Sure. Yeah.
I'm happy with getting rid of it.
I mean, the, you know, the town, the county runs one downtown, right? So why do we need it?
Well, the county runs one of the thing, but I'm talking about ones that are not, there, there are people who run commercial things like this.
Yeah, but anyway. I don't see why we need it.
So I'm hearing that we're going to get rid of this. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, we're taking that off. Fine. We have finished the review of the new lines added to the use table. Thank you. Let's go on and talk about the commercial area in eastern Caroline. And I think we have all, I've certainly driven out for a number of times now and looked at what I think. Bill has actually mapped an area that he thought about. Would you like to show us that?
I will, but, but.
Oh, I have to stop sharing.
Relinquish the screen. It's alright.
Sorry.
Alright. Let's see, I'm going to figure out which one is, there it is. That's the one. I got the right one. Alright. So as I wrote some time ago, you know, building on some ideas we tossed around at the meeting a couple of weeks ago, took a suggestion from Ernie. That, you know, we have a lot of stuff that's sort of focused right along the roadside. Uh, and that that may be too narrow an idea that, that, you know, if you look at, you know, the sort of like business park model. That's something we don't have here. And would that be suitable here? And so I drew this box, which coincides entirely with property boundaries. And has remarkably little wetland and prime agricultural land in it. That's the prime land and the, and the crosshatching and the wetlands here. So that'd be easy to come in and avoid. Uh, to take a look at, um, the aerial photo is this. Currently, there's a field here. But the main farming is actually over here and then down the road there. Much of it is actually forested. Now, this is a steep slope in here, so much of that may be inaccessible from a development standpoint. I'm, I'm not fully sure. But at least you have the possibility, I think, if you look at the topo map of accessing Buffalo Road down here, plenty of access in this part is quite level. So in many ways, it had some nice features. And so I thought it was worth thinking about. And this would give, and I do know that at one of the, the meetings, I think the last public information meeting. You know, Caleb Scott, who's running delivery building says, you know, they would like to expand. Where in our plan do we allow them to go? And well, this would be such an area, you know, in addition to the other focus commercial district. So that's my thoughts.
And this, I think you said is about a hundred fifty acres.
Thank you. Yes.
And I have been advocating for thinking about commercial districts not having to be spread out all alongside the nine. But thinking about how you can enter a property and there can be things in there and you just put a sign, a nice sign up by the road. That says, that's where it is. And then we cut down on purpose, which I'm all in favor. What do people, I mean, I, I'm very much in favor of. I believe this is, um, potential spam calling me because they want to do that. I need no warranty for my call, but it doesn't have a warranty. We look, um. I think this is a great idea and I, I think I know exactly where this is. Uh, it's also interesting to me that it's adjacent, that you could have an entry point on Buffalo Road too as well.
I'm afraid that, you know, the, the steep slope thing is a big concern. I mean, it has, I think it has very limited, much more limited development potential than, than we might say.
Can you go back to the aerial?
Yeah, it, it's hard to see that. You have to go to like Google Maps and show terrain. But it is definitely, I mean, this year, that's like a gorge. I mean, that, right in here, this is all pretty steep. Yeah. And, and I, I grant that. I mean, I know, I had, I mean, you, what's, what's the better solution, I guess, is, you know, I mean, it just.
You could narrow it up and not have it take up the whole parcel.
Yeah, but I don't know if that's that.
But that doesn't, that's not really the question, I think.
If, if you're saying there's too much, right, what, what would you add to it that was developable, I guess, would be the question, Ernie? And then that would probably be the, the stuff here where it starts to get close to Slaterville. And is indeed, you know, I think, let's go back to the map. Okay, so it's not prime farmland. You know, so that would be the possibility. Well, yeah, but that's, and that's where I'm. Yes, yeah, there's, but again, this is currently farm, but you can go this far at least, and then even a little bit more if you want, if one were willing to wipe out. That prime farmland, leave this nice big stretch out here. Possible.
There's some pretty small pieces of prime farmland in terms of how they live, but. I don't know. I mean, it's kind of a philosophical thing. You know, I mean, the, the other, the other way that commercial development could happen out here is the process of rezone in the future. Somebody had a big plan and said, I want to take, I'm going to buy these four parcels and put them into a big office park. Can I zone this commercial? That could, you know, that's, that's the other way this could happen. I mean, this is kind of, you know, we're kind of making action towards the future that we have no idea whether business is really interested in this. Or are we just doing this to, you know, as lip service to get people a lot more commercial opportunities? So I, I'm, I'm of two minds over this. And I can't say which one wins.
Um, Bill, could you go a little further east on, on that map? Is that possible?
Uh, no, the eastern west, you're showing, you're seeing everything that I put in the PDF. I mean, we, we can put up, we can put up the map of all of Caroline, um, if you want.
No, I'm just thinking about this. I guess I, I am inclined to. I, I agree, Ernie. When we sort of try to pick out a place and say, we think this would be good for development. Perhaps what we could do is say something in, if we don't feel that we want to be godlike in, in our decisions. We could put something like that in the report, because we have to submit a report to the town board.
Yeah.
And we could say that we do believe there are properties and we could identify them in east, in the eastern Slaterville area. That could be used for, uh, commercial development in the future if. Landowners or developers were interested in doing that and they could come and appeal to the zoning commission to do so. There may be other properties similar.
I'm, I'm the feeling that to develop commercials there, I don't believe it would happen just because. Your center focus for commercials should be towards the center of Caroline, where you're going to get all your traffic. People going there, you're going to get people from Richmond, not Caroline. But if I was going to go there, which is going difficult, I'd go with it. Or I'd go to Canada, you know, with the grocery store. Right, but we were kind of talking about this more as a dusty apartment or something, but wow. Yeah, no, I mean, you know, when we all started this all thing, I really had this kind of notion that, that zones could be used as a planning tool. That, you know, you can, you create zones, not, not to, you know, divide originally for, but they're actually saying, you know, wouldn't you like our town to look like this? And, and the more we've gotten into this, the more I think that doesn't work. That it's not a good planning tool. And this is a lot of my frustration was, um, from the initial beginnings, it's always been, how do you draw these freaking lines? You know, if this doesn't, it's, it's not, there's no rational, you know, anywhere, you know. Unless you're just drawing them around what's already there, which is probably essentially always in the two. So. I'm just vexed, I'm vexed, and then just explaining part three and.
Good for you. Get it out. Um, well, do you allow my suggestion about putting something like this in the, in the report?
Oh, yeah, I think that's a good thing.
Okay, so let's, I'm mostly hearing that. Is anybody else. I'm excited about trying to, to say that this should be a commercial area?
I mean, I'm, 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 Ernie's same two minds, if not three. And I, again, the godlike thing of we anoint this, but on the hand, that was part of our job. So I don't, I'm, sorry, Michelle, I interrupt stuff on you.
No, I was just gonna say, I'm, I'm happy, I agree with Ernie and, and you, Bill and Jean, I think putting it in the report is great. And I'm not comfortable playing God here.
Okay, I'm actually quite good at friend line most of the time, so I'm kind of surprised that I'm sorry. Okay, so let us move out of the commercial area in eastern Caroline and go back to the Beesmer Hamlet area.
You identified a she with capital S.
My husband does.
Sorry, wrong, wrong, wrong PowerPoint here. Let's see. Do we need to look at that area?
Uh, oh, we are going to look at this area too, so.
Did you want a map of it is all, is what I'm really asking. I need to, uh, find that.
Find that map. Yes, we do.
Okay, let me.
The last meeting that's going to.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I just got to figure out where I.
What you called it?
Yeah, where's, where's?
I, I think I have it up, Bill, if you want me to get it.
Sure, that's fine. I will have to stop sharing.
I think I have, yeah. I mean, unless you can find it quick, that's whatever.
Well, it should be one of the, I'm looking at my, ah, there it is. I, I called it center Beesmer, not Beesmer. That was my problem. Well, it should be one of the, I'm looking at my, ah, there it is. I, I called it center Beesimer, not Beesimer. That was my problem. All right, there we are.
Okay, so this is what we discussed last time, is about. Bill has suggested that um, we take that entire area outlined in red. And make that a commercial district. And then there was some hesitancy about that and some concern that. It wasn't really appropriate and we kind of left it at that. So where are?
I thought there was the instruction of um. Taking what is currently the light yellow and rural within the red boundary. And maybe that part of the Beesimer.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think that's where we're at, is this central region, does it stay in ag rural or does it become part of the Beesimer?
Those two, those two things, putting in the Beesimer house and.
And then Michelle and Bill, that, or yeah, Michelle and Bill together have. Um, produced a table that compares the uses. In uh, ag rural versus Beesimer now.
Right. So.
That's what we want to see. Can you see that document?
Yep, we certainly can. I think uh, if I stop sharing this and I can't remember if I opened it up already. Oh yes, I had it open already because I thought that might happen. So let me share that one instead. Oh, wrong thing. Sorry, sorry. Ah, there we are. How's that look?
Yeah.
Uh, is that big enough?
Okay, yeah, you should get it.
All right, I can uh. See what a hundred percent looks like. Smaller, great. All right. And two hundred probably, let's, let's go to one fifty. And if that's too big, we'll just, all right, there we go.
That's good. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so let um, someone talk through this.
All right, well, since I made, so, I mean, I, so this is, the key things to me is how I view is that. There are differences in uses, but also differences in building sizes. So it's really a question of whether we think the ideal or best development, playing god. Is in residential development or commercial development for that area if our choices are between ag rural versus Beesimer type hamlet. So in terms of the amount of housing that can go in. If it stays in the agricultural rural district, we are at our density of one dwelling per three acres. Whereas if it's in the Beesimer district, it can be about three times as dense because the minimum lot size there is one acre. Now, that does not mean, of course, that it would be developed at one dwelling per three acres in the ag rural, but that would be the maximum you could do. Um, commercial lot size is the same, but the other big difference has to do with the sizes of commercial buildings. The size of a single building, but also the, you're allowed to have. Six thousand square feet of, of, of commercial building space on a lot in the ag rural and only two thousand in Beesimer. Because again, we crafted Beesimer as a residential hamlet. So that is one, so that the, the residential dwelling density and the commercial building sizes, I, I find to be key differences. And scrolling down, you know, they both have certain uses. The permissions aren't that different. Sometimes it's, you know, SPR versus SUP that they share. Um, and you know, they. Yeah, but where it really differs is that there are a couple of things that you can do in Beesimer, such as a funeral home or have a government office. But there are a lot of commercial uses in the ag rural that are not allowed. So things like an auction house. So there could be an auction house right under seventy-nine there. If that stays in ag rural, for example, but would not occur if it were in the Beesimer hamlet. Is that a good thing or a bad thing? That's what we have to decide. There could be commercial kennels, commercial kitchens, composting facilities, and, and another celebrations. So there are actually a lot more commercial opportunities available. In the, as an ag rural and the building sizes could be larger. So to me, it comes down to looking at that as, do we want, you know, yeah, maybe it'll stay a farm or open field. But we also in ag rural have many opportunities for some commercial development that aren't available. In the Beesimer hamlet, but in the hand, housing density is much higher in the Beesimer hamlet, so it might be more profitable to develop into housing. Than if it's in the ag rural. So to me, that's where it comes down to. That's the quick summary.
That's a really good summary. Thank you. I'm glad we, um, we tabled this on this week.
So is there a motion?
There was a motion. Bales Brown moved to include these two parcels in the Beesimer home. So that promotion that's on the floor. Yes, um, so. Does anyone want to speak against that? And, you know, you could, for instance, say that you think it would be better as an app.
So what was the original thinking when we?
I think the original thinking goes to broken up.
Residential hamlet. It was, you know, trying to break up. You know, visually and experientially, so you, you had some diversity in landscape.
But if we look at the actual use table, you can see that wouldn't actually necessarily be as old. So, you know, so there's a question. I mean, I think that in my mind that. This is more likely to fall to residential development than. You know, I mean, in that, you know, development pattern coming out through town dry and, you know, you know, that's medium residential. Medium, that's you better than going, and that kind of is what, you know, the Beesimer area is. You know, overall uh, density. Um, so a continuation on the back. That is definitely down here, with a very good half uh, Snyder Hill or whatever. Seems to make some sense, but um. You know, the, the initial idea of, of being that more farm-like is, is. Intelligent as well, I guess that. That is only going to happen as long as somebody doesn't decide to monetize the property. You know, whether it turns to a rental or whether it turns to some commercial type development. Will likely fall to develop the tasks at some point.
Um, so I see Bill and then Michelle.
And so, I mean, I guess I'm ambivalent of, of multiple minds. Um. And, you know, we, this came up in regards to this later bill property as well, that to what extent. Can or should we be paying attention to desires of the current landowners? You know, we are planning for the future. And it's going to be, you know, maybe a succession of landowners. I think the current landowner, at least a couple of these parcels, would probably prefer. Um, to actually have it be not part of Beesimer. Is that relevant? You know.
I think we're actually not supposed to do spot.
Yeah, yeah, well, not spot zoning, but you know, the question is, do, do, you know, we did send a letter to all those people that we were changing them in the focused commercial district. Because to some extent, we thought was worth getting their input on that, so.
Know that it was that we were considering it, yes.
Yeah, so, right. So in this case, you know, I, I don't know. So. I, you know, honestly, I, I think the, 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 the particular landowner would prefer to be in ag rural. Does that matter? I, I don't know. Actually, you know, it.
You know, wanted to be in commercial districts, so the question is.
Right.
Putting them in Beesimer to help them or not?
Right. And, and it does depend on whether the more likely development is housing or non-housing.
Yeah, right.
And so that's, you know, and, and, and when, you know, I don't want to hurt anyone in town, but it's also not necessarily our job to like, figure out how to like. Really help someone who happens to particularly ask us for a particular change. Um, because that, as, as Nan pointed out, that gets to be unfair in that just those couple who happen to approach us. Uh, get their whims catered to. So it's a, it's a dilemma. Um, because I do want to do right by everybody in the town as much as possible. So, but having said all those words, I really don't know. I think that I might tend to leave it this way, partly because of our original thinking. And probably because we do have a fair amount of territory in the Beesimer hamlet and maybe, given how much everyone thinks Route seventy-nine is important for commercial activity. We should actually allow a few more commercial options in this little narrow stretch, but I am pretty much on the fence on this one.
Michelle.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm not really on the fence. I think it should be part of Beesimer. I, I think. Considering the bus line that goes along there, that, that, that whole thing. Is leaning towards residential. Yeah, I think for an investment opportunity, uh, a proper. Their land to be developed for residential. So it's not like you're denying uh, them. The right to develop their land uh, for profit. Um. I also think it's kind of weird to have like the spot of ag between two parts of Beesimer. It's like separating Beesimer. It's like. I thought that was considered something that you didn't do, like separate a, a hamlet like that. So I, I am firmly on the side of that that should be all of Beesimer.
That's a little fun, really. Thank you. Um. Joe, Bruce, did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, yeah, I, I. I think you don't need to make Beesimer quotes so big. I think. Here again, we shouldn't be talking about. Somebody designing or what they're going to do with anyone because. That's more or less how, how the people, as you said, we weren't going to do. Uh, I don't think anybody who is buying a house or building a home. Who doesn't want to be around their own residential commercial. Would even think of laying on the biggest major thoroughfare in the town of Caroline is the Route seventy-nine. That's a place where the majority of the commercial development is already occurred. So, and, and I think staffing. That section is open because there's houses on the other side. When they're up on the hill, there's no view until we leave it off. It's just. To me. Would count talent to residents who live there. And I don't think that's our goal. Uh, I think we're supposed to do what's best for the town. I think making all Route seventy-nine residential, to me, is ridiculous when that makes me so proud of. And the faces of the society that's that way. So, that's just my thought.
So you want to, you would vote against the um.
Definitely.
Yeah, okay. Barbara?
Um, I speak in favor of the uh, motion. Um. I found that just the discussion compelling that. There is new residential development already. Uh, I think my name is Shana, you know, um, two, two houses. Along seventy-nine, but clearly there is interest in it. Um. Uh, I think, you know, salvage more connectivity and it doesn't rule out businesses. It just uh, keeps them of a certain. Certain size, but there's many, many businesses that are allowed to be. So I would speak in favor of. Um, making that all olive green or whatever it is with everything that's red up on there.
Okay, I'm, then I call for a vote then.
So who's talking? All the yellow?
No, no.
So, to, to clarify, Barbara, I think you're, are you, you're including this parcel up here as Beesimer?
Yeah.
This parcel here in Beesimer.
Yeah.
And this portion of this parcel in Beesimer.
And I thought that's what the.
Yes.
Motion was about.
That was, so through, those are those three parcels.
Is that how you defined it last time?
Yes, because we had extended that red line. See where the dot is up on the top?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
What about the lower red line? I, is that correct?
Yes, we drew that, that's, we drew that line. We just magically drew that line.
Okay.
Uh, okay, so. So the motion is to move those three yellow parcels that you're now in had to the world.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I'm going to throw the monkey wrench in. Okay, based on what Mark is saying, I mean. This line, this red line could be down here if we want to make Beesimer a really nice uniform shape. It doesn't. Add a lot to buildable area, just a little bit here, a little bit there. I, you know, I don't know how, again, this is a line I drew originally. I. Yeah, i- i- the line is here because this weird solar panel, or no, that's the, the storage unit. Parcel ends right there at that corner. I just went straight across parallel to seventy-nine from there. Whether it's there or down here, I don't have a.
Yeah, I couldn't really hear the discussion.
Yeah, my original move, motion, it was to move it down to the bottom of the.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
But I, but I recognize that there's a big one, you know, whether you get across that, yeah, it's actually a pretty max as that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm not so certain. Would start my own motion at this point, I mean.
Okay, I'm going to leave it there then and future people can make decisions.
Right.
So we have those three parcels and that's what we think the motion is, those three parcels that are outlined there. To move those into the Beesimer Hamlet. All in favor, say aye. I have Barb, I have.
Aye.
For Michelle. My Barbie, Michelle.
I'm not a, I'm an abstain, I.
Well, I was going to abstain also. That's not fair. We really can't do that, Ernie.
I would abstain.
Okay.
Bruce, you're the tiger. Whatever, then.
Well, it fails. Yeah, that means it's the way it is. That means it is ag law. Because you only had three votes.
Wait, Jeans, what, which, which way did you vote?
My vote was to put it into Beesimer, but that only makes three.
All right, well, I, I will throw my hat in the Beesimer ring then.
Good for you, Bill.
Okay, so that vote then is to improve this in the Beesimer and that is. Uh, and I'm going to record these. It's Barb and Michelle. And Jean and Bill. With Bernie and Bruce at Spamen. Okay, that is the last of the article. Oh no, we'll have one more. We have eight in Slaterville Springs. Okay, so this is, there's Slaterville Springs. This is that piece. Um. Let's see if we can explain again about when this was built, the town got a, a bit of a road. Uh, something.
All right, so along Fuller Lane, there was a development some years ago. And when that was put in and this road was put in, an easement was attached. To the parcel so that the road could be extended to this property line. That's what I'm sure of.
Yeah.
I don't believe, nor do I believe Ms. Chris Bell was claiming that there was any easement onto this parcel, but the road could be extended. To allow for the development. That was the intent at the time and that's how things sit on the, if you look at the, whatever you call that thing.
That's what it seems to say.
Right. So there has, there was a suggestion made to us that this area outlined in blue, which starts up here. Down here, oops, sorry about that, all the way down. Uh, they had extended the road, but already part of this is in Slaterville, so I've now drawn the blue line along there, here. Coming up over to the eastern boundary and back, be included as part of the Slaterville hamlet. That was a suggestion made to the, the zoning commission. Um, we asked Rick to plot out important things in the area like this prime farmland and the water resources overlay. Not present on this map is he identified a, a possible species, habitat suitable for rare species up here. But that was not in the original request. Area anyway. Uh, I looked at this and said, hmm, I do like. This land along Route seventy-nine. Being allowed to be developed, maybe, you know, look at the business going there or whatever. That makes a lot of sense, even though it chews up some prime farmland. I don't like, even though we have some protections for prime farmland. Allowing all this to potentially be developed in, into housing or a commercial area. So I said, what would be an option that'd be alternative to that? Uh, would be to tax something on the north end, basically. And so those are my, my red area with a couple possible. Uh, additions to that. And that's where this map came from.
Okay, so you could get to that property. The, the one outlined in solid red right now through Fuller Lane.
Yes.
If you added the piece that joins Midline Road, there also could be a road that went in there.
Correct.
And the parcel that is to the east uh, could be gotten to by either of those routes if they were built.
Right.
Okay. And this would, let us say that zoning was passed and somebody wanted to put in more than five houses. This would be a conservation subdivision.
Uh, not if it's in the Slaterville Springs Hamlet.
But it could be, it could be if they wanted to.
It's just not required to be.
Okay.
The greater density would be allowed there.
The greater density would be allowed.
But, you know, it's pretty clear that the only potential use there is residential, right?
Pretty much.
Yeah. Right.
So, so I could not hear what Ernie said. Could that be?
I'm just saying that the, the, that if we, if we make the only access to this property up Fuller Lane, then it's clearly going to become residential development, um, to be developed. It's, it's clear as soon as it's gonna be residential, pretty much like Fuller Lane, um, you know, single family homes on either side of the road. Uh, maybe, maybe there's a little circle where they do.
Yeah.
Um, whereas if you allow it to extend all the way down to Route 79, then there are other access possibilities, uh, you know, obviously greater potential, uh, developments on that that is, you know, not necessarily residential.
You could even make conservation subdivision. If you wanted to, because you buy
Neighborhoods.
Right.
But you could also put a dollar store in it.
Right, of course.
I would almost think about going back to the border the way it was on the Red Wing side. Going older, yeah, is there dotted one?
Or dotted.
And then going down to, uh, Hamilton Road and across above, and just taking that small chunk of that road and put that in there. We've got, we've got that one below for 79.
Or just extend it down to where it can access the body of the Hamilton, the north end.
Yeah.
So, um, uh, what I think you are saying though is, let's start at the left-hand side there, come in and off of Midline Road on the dotted line, go straight across.
Is that part of that parcel? Is that?
No, this is a separate parcel.
This is somebody else's parcel.
Somebody else's parcel.
Yeah.
Right. Th- th- this part, th- th- this parcel, there's a big parcel here that goes all the way up to here.
Yeah.
And then all the way down to Route 79 with only this access. There's another parcel in here, hard to see near the road, but they, their access is right there.
So this was Ms. Chris Bell's line that
Yeah.
dotted line across there.
Yes, yes, yes. She had, I tried to draw roughly where they had put it on their map.
So is there a property line there? Are you creating a parcel that would have no access?
It is, uh, well, so that, well, it depends what happens. I did not, because this, particularly if you didn't put this dashed area in, this would be attached to this down to Hamilton Road.
Right, right, right.
And that, and that is why this dotted line does not come all the way over here. There is a narrow corridor here that doesn't completely landlock this parcel.
Okay.
I'm not worried about these four towards midnight.
The red line, the solid red line, then the dotted line, then the blue line.
Then over to straight above Hamilton Road, and down from Hamilton Road and across where the elbun is, just that little piece of elbun would go on to the bar.
So you would
So, so, I'm, I'm, you know, audio's a little fuzzy, but also not always fine. So is Bruce suggesting coming straight down here to Hamilton Road, or is he including some of this over here that is in my dotted red area?
I'm including that dotted red area.
Okay, and then bring this down to here, basically.
Yes, I will go back over to your solid red one.
Yeah, where Hamilton Road.
That's straight above Hamilton Road.
Okay.
Up to Hamilton Road. And then across just above the good piece of elbun, most.
Okay, so I see you're saying about in here, you would, you would add
Yes.
something in here.
Yeah, as long as you have some way to get access back to something else in the back.
Well, Hamilton Road would have access, right?
Yeah.
Well, but again, if you want to get to here, again, you'd have to leave, I mean, you know, you'd want to leave this corridor. I mean, again, someone could eventually sell this parcel off and landlock that parcel, but that would be them doing that, not, not.
Right. But you should also, also be able to access it on the extended Hamilton Road.
Well, you access this parcel, but again, it's how you get to here, back here. But yeah, okay.
Well, because that's not a parcel, because somebody makes the parcel. Right now
Exactly.
under the same control, just a matter of where the, the, the handle line is drawn.
Right.
Drawing that at, at the, at the Ms. Chris Bell's request.
So what I, what I'm hearing is people, the people who are talking in favor of this, um, I feel it's, I think, uh, making the hamlet bigger is good.
I think it's good.
I think it's a good plan. I think people want to live there and, um, I'm in favor of that. Uh, Bruce, I am taking what you have said as a motion. Would someone like to second Bruce's motion?
I'm, I'm trying to remember how to draw on the PDF. I know I had to comment somehow. And then what do I do, Nan?
Um, let's see, so you have to, um, you have to go back to put the, the scroll, yep, now, um, go up to, on the left, go up to tools.
Left, go up to tools, uh, where are we looking?
Left, very top at the left where it says home and then tools.
All right.
And then, okay, then says, then go to comment.
Yeah, so I'm gonna add, click on comment.
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, hmm, that didn't work. I should have been able to, now you should be able to click on the pencil, but that didn't.
Right.
Oh, I think you have to enable, click on enable editing.
Ha ha, that's why I couldn't do this. All right. Now, I don't know what color. Okay, I'm gonna draw, let's just choose some different color. Uh, what color should we be to make this might still be, should I be red? Purple? Let's try purple. All right. So, uh, Bruce, you are going to, um, I'm gonna be a little robot here. So, um, are you starting here?
No.
No.
Go from there, over to the side of the
So, so, am I in the right place now?
Yes.
Here?
Go to the corner, then go straight down, right on that one. Now, stack, angle up, oops, go up, go back up.
So do you want it up here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, all right, all right, all right. Now, how do I get rid of that?
Just click delete
Uh,
on your, on your keyboard.
I know, I tried that. It, 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 it's making noises at me.
Oh, just go back to the corner.
All right, okay, I think we're talking here.
Yeah.
Right, and then down to Hamilton.
Right.
And then right above this prime farmland.
Yep.
There.
Yep.
And then back up, I assume, because
Yes.
And then, and then basically
Yes.
That's Bruce's motion minus this little squiggle here that I
Right.
All right.
Okay, so that's Bruce's motion, and I don't remember if I have a second.
Uh, I'll second that.
Okay. So that's Bruce's motion to expand.
I don't know if I'm in favor of it, but I'll second it.
Okay.
So, I just question, you know, are there any reasons why we don't just draw it through the property line there and where the backlogs? I mean, I understand that there's some thinking that they're gonna create, you know, an access way, but we're not drawing property line. We're drawing a, drawing them. Um, so why doesn't that just, that, that, that left, the right most line just shift over to that property line? And just follow that property line.
So, um, yeah, I, I hear you saying go to here, right, which is a property line.
Yeah.
And then, uh, I wish I could get rid of this thing here. I don't understand why it's selected and won't let me delete it, won't let me do anything to it. Look at that. Okay, let me move it. I don't know what that box is. I, there we go. Good. All right, got rid of that box. So the property line is right here, Ernie, and then it jogs over to here. Are you saying you'd come here and then down this way?
I mean, I just, I find, you know, splitting properties are just, it's just a funny situation when you're actually trying to physically build something and find your two different zone. Um, you know, it's not as bad as when you're in two different towns, but, uh, it's, it's not great. I'm just suggesting that. I, I'm not, I'm not pushing.
Are you, would you like to offer it as a friendly amendment and see if it's accepted?
I just want to put it up in discussion. Does anybody else feel?
Well, I agree with following property lines. The only reason I did what I said I would do is to try to avoid that little bit of finance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, and, and that, and that makes perfectly reasonable reason not to include that. Um, but, you know, protections of prime land, what would I agree with anyway? So I just get the help of it to be within one zone versus another zone.
Okay, so, um, that's a discussion. Would you like to amend your, amend your motion to include that?
Yep, that would be fine.
Okay, so we are now discussing, and, uh, Bill, who seconded that, would you accept that as well?
Oh, I don't care. Like, like, that's for the purposes of discussion. I don't want to say, okay, you know, I, I don't have any, for purposes of discussion, let's put that on the table. We can discuss it. That's fine.
Okay, so that, we're now talking about the thing outlined in red and blue, except for the silly little squirrel.
Right.
And, you know.
Maroon in blue.
Yes, marooned in, okay, marooned in blue. Michelle?
Uh, how far does Hamilton Road actually go? Where does it stop?
No, very far. It is, it essentially goes to where that, um, where the corner of the purple is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it goes back there, yeah.
I see.
They just go back into the swamp, right?
It does, pretty much goes back to the swamp. So it would have to be, somebody would have to, um, add to it as part of the development if they were gonna do this.
They'd have to do what to it?
They would have to probably upgrade the road, and they'd have to put a road in on that property if they were gonna, if they was in this.
Smell smart, what do you think, too?
Uh.
What Tim has to say on that?
Tim?
Yeah.
Tim?
Yeah, I was just gonna point out, everybody, um, if you might not be familiar with this area as much, that if you were to go straight over to Midline Road, that currently, my recollection is most of these lots that are above that, that are demarcated as lots, have either been sold or looks like they have services on them. And pretty much that goes, if you keep going north, that's almost all the way residential till you get to the top of that, if you were thinking about that.
So are you saying include the whole top of the parcel?
I'm, because I'm a liaison, I'm not
Oh. Well, I, I would just be concerned that you
I just wanted
created a lot that
No.
It's gonna be very difficult to do anything with.
No.
And you split the parcel.
No, I'm just trying to give information.
Yeah.
All right, so if we go, so right now, that part that's north of there, some of that is currently being farmed.
Right.
And as long as the owners retain access to it, they can continue doing that. But I, I hear Nan and, you know, but yeah, I mean, the, this has been developed, again, we have a lot of open land here still. But yeah, there are definitely services and houses going in along this road, um, every year.
Right. Um, Bruce suggested that maybe we would want to go look at it, so that we would have a better sense of what this looks like. Um, and I have a couple of other things that we need to do, and we're already 10 minutes over. So
Look at that.
Um, yeah.
And, and, yeah, and I read what I said in the email, which is, you know, yeah, we don't have, I mean, the maps, I don't, are we planning to show these new maps at our public information meeting in November?
Um,
If they're available.
If they're available, I think we should. We're not really, we're mostly talking about, Articles Five to the end.
Right, so I don't, I guess what it says, I don't want us to feel any pressure to rush these decisions to get them done for that meeting. I don't think that that's the schedule we're on, I need to be on.
I think that we can finish up, um, we can finish this up as we're going over the rest of that. So let's, let us table this, look at what's happened, and then we discuss this when all six of us are together again. Uh, I'm gonna just refer to two other things, which is, if that's okay with everyone, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay, I, uh, in the, in the list of things that we need to discuss, there's also local laws that reported the town board for their attention. You can all read those. If there's anything else you think that needs to be put in there, let us know. And then there's the other issue with the natural resources inventory should be expanded at some points in the future, because you don't have anything else to do. So where are we now? Um, in terms of Articles Five on, I think we have several of those. Uh, Nan is certainly working on getting us a word document that she thinks is what you've said. And then we are going to read it, and we are going to see if there's places that things disagree with each other or that don't agree with our recollection. And once we have that to the point where we think that we can publish it and put it out, we can have a public information meeting within, the minimum is two weeks, it could be longer. We have a lot, I sent you all a lot of dates, most dates are acceptable to people. Um, so when we get to this point, perhaps next week, we can figure that out. Yep.
So we're not working away all the week from the end and, uh, the whole thing?
We've done it.
We have?
Yeah.
Yeah, you were out of town, Ernie. Weren't you lucky?
You guys went through all that stuff to that?
We did. All in one night. Most of it was stuff that Oh, no, we don't. We might have weeks of stuff, which is fabulous. Thank you so much. So, I think, so, um, what we really need to do is decide, um, I think we'll meet next week, we'll maybe, I know that Bruce can't come here, but I think that we can at least look at the document, and you'll have it in your email, and you can read it. If there's something that occurs to you, let me know. And it's gonna come as a word document, you'll have. Okay. And, um, and, um, we can then begin, we can decide what we have to have in the meeting. The public information meeting, as I understand, um, no matter where we have it, uh, if, if we have, when we have one in person, if there are not six of us in the room, that's okay, because then it's just not an official meeting, which it isn't because we're not making any decisions out. Is that correct?
If there are not four.
If there are not a quorum.
If there's not a four, if there's not, if there's not four of us in the room, then it's, it doesn't have to be a, it doesn't, in other words, you don't have to have four of us in there. It's not a requirement.
Yeah, right.
Do we have to come off? Yes, I think we kind of do. And we have to figure out next week how we're gonna do that meeting. Uh, I was thinking about puppet show, but it doesn't seem like a good idea. So, uh, um, so that's what we're gonna do next week, I hope. And we're ripping right along. Um, and as we end, uh, I have, I have a presentation to make to all of you, uh, on the zoning commission, and to Nan, and to Rick. My next door neighbor, Susie Larkin, has just published a book called Intersections, which is a book of, um, about Baylor Road and Buckle Road, and what interception. And it's, um, she interviews everyone on that hill and asks us what we think about living there, and we're beautiful photographs. This show is opening at the state of the art, um, the first Friday in November. But I would, as a gesture of my deep appreciation for all of your hard work, I want to give each one of you one of these. I want to give Mark one for coming to all these meetings, meeting, and being our speaker.
Thank you, Jean.
I want to give Bruce one. Thank you so much for all your work during this. It's a lot. Ernie, I want to thank you. I would be very interested in all of these details about this, about you, Barbara, the work, anything, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you so much. All answering all those questions. I have ones in my bag for, for, uh, Tim and for Nan and for Rick and for Bill, and I will either, I will send yours, some in the mail, and someone will drop off at your homes.
Wait, I'm gonna get one too, right?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't say, yes, yes, you're gonna get one. Yes.
What they do in your road?
What did they do there?
Yeah, Baylor Road's got, that all closed off this morning.
Oh, they're just fixing the asphalt at the bottom where it does a spray under it, and it's just pouring all up today or tomorrow.
Today, or you're gonna pay the rest out of the top?
Uh, not this year. I have, I want to do it in the future.
I'm disappointed with the direction, the highway department is having here, you know, gravel roads.
Yeah, I really love my gravel road. And I hate the fact that when we, we kind of want to drive, people speed on it. So, but thank you all, and I hope you enjoy this book, and I hope you'll come to Susie's opening.
Cool. Thank you, Jean.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
You are very welcome.
Night. Congratulations.
And if you find any typos in it, let me know. And if you find any typos in it, let me know because Susie's trying, she only comes for fifty a time.
Bill, thank you for your hard work.
Absolutely, thank you. Yeah.